Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Whitehall City Council Meeting of Tuesday, May 20, 2025. If anyone would please rise for a moment of silence and fall by the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Ong, will you please call roll?
Morrison?
Present.
Heck?
Present.
Smith?
Present.
Harkar?
Present.
Dixon?
Present.
Brown?
Present.
Elmore?
Present.
President Potter?
Present.
Under approval of minutes, we've got two sets this evening, first being the April 15, 2025 Agenda and Regular Meeting Minutes, and we also have the May 7, 2025 Agenda and Regular Meeting Minutes.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Thank you. There's been a motion by Mr. Dixon, second by Ms. Harkar, for the approval of the minutes. Is there any discussion? Ms. Ong, please call roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harkar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Minutes have been approved. We'll now move on to our Standing Committee reports, and they'll start by Administration and Financial Management, Chairperson Elmore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Administration and Financial Management met last Tuesday. We have several pieces of legislation on the agenda this evening. Our minutes are on file. We will meet again next week, next Tuesday.
Thank you. Community and Elder Advocacy, Chairperson Harkar.
Yes, thank you, President Potter. We also met last week. We have no drafts or resolutions, or legislation, sorry, for vote tonight, and we'll meet again next week.
Thank you. Community Standards and Enforcement, Chairperson Smith.
Thank you, President Potter. Community Standards and Enforcement also met last week. We have Ordinance 37, 2025, for a Title Only First Reading this evening, and we will, our minutes are on file, and we will meet again next week.
Thank you. Economic Development, Chairperson Dixon.
Thank you, President Potter. Economic Development met last week. Our minutes are on file. We have no legislation on the agenda tonight, and we will meet again in these chambers next week sometime after 6:30.
Very good. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services, Chairperson Brown.
Thank you, President Potter. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services met last week. Thank you for the coverage in my absence. Our minutes are on file. We don't have any drafts or pending legislation, and we plan to meet next Tuesday at 6:30.
Thank you. Public Safety, Chairperson Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Safety met last week. Our minutes are on file. We'll meet again next week, Tuesday, about 6:30.
Thank you. And that brings us to Park and Recreation, Chairperson Heck.
Thank you, Mr. President. Parks and Recreation met last Tuesday. Our minutes are on file. We have no legislation on the agenda tonight, and we will meet again sometime after 6:30 this coming Tuesday.
Okay. That brings us to our official reports. Mayor Bibbins.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. First of all, thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening. I do have some announcements and some dates that I would like to share with you, council, as well as members of the public. On May the 28th, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., Commissioner Erica Crowley will be coming to Whitehall City Hall to do her conversations with Crowley. As you know, one of the mandates that I have in the mayor's administration is to deal with poverty and deal with some of the systemic issues in our city. I gave you statistics from our state of the district, from our school system, about our school-aged children, that are, 73% of them live below or at the poverty level in the city of Whitehall. And the city of Whitehall currently has about a 17% to 18% rate of poverty as it relates to all of our residents. I recommend it to council, as well as to the public, to review the Poverty Blueprint that was drafted by the county, and Commissioner Crowley is an expert on that blueprint. She does these conversations throughout Franklin County to give the community, as well as service providers, access to her to answer any question. In fact, I gave every member of council a copy of the flyer, and she puts on there, "Ask Me Anything," and she really means that. So if you are available from 9:00 to 11:00, please come to City Hall. She will be here answering any question as it relates to her role as a county commissioner. She oversees all of the social service agencies. She oversees Office on Aging. So senior citizens, you are certainly welcome to come in and ask Commissioner Crowley any questions as it relates to county matters, and she will be a resource for jobs and access to job opportunities throughout the county. It's just going to be a fantastic time. She set the time from 9:00 to 11:00, so that was not my time, but I did open up City Hall for that. I do believe it will be a great resource to our residents, and you all are welcome to come out. Next, June the 14th. As you know, members of council, and some people in the public know, I have a passion for fishing, and I'm going to take that passion to Whitehall Community Park, where we will do a Father's Day fishing event down at the park. We are getting all of the information out. We have fishing poles that are donated. If you have any fishing poles, members of public, that you would like to donate to the young people, to get them back into fishing and not sitting in front of their television playing video games, we will be fishing at Whitehall Community Park on June the 14th from 9:00 to noon, and more information is coming out on that. Next, please mark your calendars for July the 3rd for our fireworks. And finally, calendar event, July the 26th, for our Food Truck Festival. Once again, the headliner for that will be in vogue. It's going to be a great event. And then last, but not least, I would like to congratulate the graduating class of 2025 Whitehall Yearling High School. We have over 230 students. I want to say 235 is the number that are graduating from Whitehall Yearling High School this Friday. More than 51% of them are college-bound. I have a personal heart in this because four of them are going into the United States Marine Corps, and ooh-rah to those young men that are going to the Marine Corps. But our very own Stephanie Fanoti will be the keynote speaker, and graduation will be at World Harvest this Friday, and I just wanted to say publicly, congratulations to our graduating seniors. Thank you.
Mayor, that's a full slate, for sure, and appreciate all the information. That's great. City Attorney Nick Ademus.
Well, I wish I could say it was slow and boring in the city attorney's office the past couple of weeks, but otherwise. Just a couple of things real quick. I know Resolution 17, 18, and 19 to send the ballot, or the referendum to the ballot was on for a first, understand that it might go on First Reading tonight, just so everyone knows. As is my practice, before I submit these, I send them to the Board of Elections just to give a quick cursory review, to make sure everything's in order for what they need. I did send these prior to sending them last week to committee, to the Board of Elections. Got the feedback with no comments or anything, so if those are passed tonight when they get to the Board of Elections, that should be the end of it until November, when it's on the ballot. Second thing, on the initiative petition, we talked last week at committee about the crunch in the timeline. Unbeknownst to us, when I was talking timeline and trying to get the public hearing for Planning Commission scheduled, apparently where it's published cannot get it published on such short notice, so we missed the deadline to have it on the June 5 meeting, which is why there's a special meeting for the Planning Commission on June 16. That was one of those things that's beyond our control, so that's why that's there. With that, your timeline for council is a little abbreviated, but it can still work. Planning Commission on June 16, assuming they take action on that night, council's deadline becomes July 16. Luckily, you have a council meeting on July 15 to take action. Just a quick note, if there's any questions that pop up before then, that is typically my vacation week, so ask beforehand, please. But if council takes action on the 15th, that then provides the petitioners, if they need to do what they need to do to put it on the ballot, their sufficient 10 days under the charter, that gives them their time to do that, and council would be able to either have a special meeting on the 29th, or if you want to give Ms. Ong a little bit of heartburn, pass the resolution to put it on the ballot on August 5, and then she has to deliver it by August 6. But it is still doable within this timeline. It's just quick. Unless there's any questions on that, that's all I have at the moment.
Mr. President, yes, I do have some questions. So just from my understanding, the ordinance that were 42 has been certified, and the language exists is what's going to be on the ballot, is that correct?
Which one are you talking about?
I'm talking about this ordinance, number 4010.
Initiative petition.
That is the initiative petition. So that does not automatically go on the ballot. That goes to Planning Commission, and then that goes to council. If council accepts the ordinance as written, then it becomes law. If council amends it or rejects it, the petitioners, the initiative petitioners, to keep them separate from the referendum, the initiative petitioners then have the option to say, "We want the ballot, we want the ordinance language as presented, placed on the ballot for the voters to vote on." They get their 10 days to make that decision and provide a copy, and then if that occurs, that's when council pass to pass the resolution to put it on the ballot. And what I would do, when I mentioned with the referendum, as we get closer in preparation, I would pre-prepare the resolution, especially if Ms. Ong is only going to have a business day to get it there, for the Board of Elections to review and make sure everything's in order with what they need to get the proper language on there.
So with regards to the language that exists within this, our opportunity to make the amendments or changes or have discussion regarding it is after it comes from the Planning Commission, is that what you're saying?
Yes. So you will have a couple of meetings to be able to do that, because there's, if they meet on the 16th, there's a council meeting on the 17th, and then a council meeting on July 1st, so you'll actually have three council meetings, a couple of committee meetings within there, yes.
With the last, I'm sorry, with the last possible date in which it must be passed to get going to the...
Our meeting on the 5th, deliver downtown on the 6th of August.
On August 3.
Well, when you say the last day to be passed, is that for council?
To put the legislation through, or to put this towards the ballot.
To put this towards the ballot, it has to be to the Board of Elections by August 6, 4 p.m. The initiative petitioners have 10 days within the charter to determine whether, because if council makes an amendment to it and they're amenable to it, then they don't have to put it on the ballot. But if the petitioners want to put it on the ballot, they have 10 days to make that decision. And so if we want to try to make sure this hits the November ballot, if that is where it is heading, council, the last council meeting, regularly scheduled council meeting, would be that July 15 meeting.
To get this done, and all the moving parts together.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So that does bring us to...
Official reports.
Correct. And next is Auditor Quinzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no official report tonight. I would just ask for favorable consideration of ordinances 41, 43, 44, 46, 47, 48, and Resolution 20, 2025.
Thank you. Next is Director of Public Service, Rawlins.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also have no official report for this evening, but I do ask for favorable consideration for Resolution 16, 2025. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Director of Public Safety, Gray, who is not with us this evening. Brings us to Treasurer, Alexander.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing this evening.
Thank you. The following official reports have been filed in the council office since the last meeting, which we have one item, that's the auditors' reports for April 2025. Under Communications, Petitions, and Claims, we have got no communications, petitions, and claims that have been filed in the council office since our last meeting. This now brings us to our first poll public. I would like anyone to please step forward, sign in, and state your name as you start to speak, and you'll have three minutes.
Okay, I'm signed in.
Thank you.
My name's Merrill Robinson. I'm a Whitehall resident, and I want to talk to you briefly about one of the supporting elements to the three ordinances that have been asked to reconsider about Fairway Cliffs, because I was a little confused about a couple of things, and after asking some questions, I think that I need to share that, both for the council and for the public, because there were some things I misunderstood, and I suspect other people did too. And the primary issue is the development agreement. And the reason I bring that up is, you know, regardless of the referendum and the issues about whether we're going to build this high-density community or not, and subdivision, one of the things that was brought up during the discussions on council originally was that the developer proposed that they provided a development plan as a way to show what they planned to do and make it more palatable, both to council and to the public. So that proposal was provided on relatively short notice, about a week before council actually did the vote, I think it was one session before. And it was stated that parts of that draft were proprietary, which makes sense, there's people who have proprietary aspects for construction and other things. And then after the council passed that, I asked if there was a public copy, and I found out, no, there is not, because it's still proprietary. It's not been redacted, it's not been made available to the public. And the thing that particularly concerned me is it was implied, because the developer basically suggested this variation on the standard process, which was, "I'll give you a development plan to show you what I plan to do, and that will make you all happier with voting for the proposal." So they did that, but that's not really a contract, and it's not really a proposal, because after council meeting in a prior week, I had a short talk with the city attorney, and normally the process is the development agreements are signed after the final voting, zoning board approvals. So essentially, we have a presentation on what I think I want to do that is not binding and not public. So when they came back and asked for reconsideration, presumably, I don't want to speak for the contractor, he wants to give you another development plan to show how much better this is, but none of the components of that development plan have been under discussion, whether they were proprietary or not. Surely, there's a large part of that that is not proprietary. So the thing that concerns me is it's not a proposal, it's not a contract, there's no penalties if they don't perform, okay? And it was implied that that was a contingency for you voting for the agreement. And it's implied that if they give you another one, that you'll vote for that, and it's different. So this is not straight law. This is just, the impression that comes across is, you had an implied agreement based on a draft proposal, which is not signed, which is not legally binding, that was offered to the council and has not been made public. And if they give you another one that you're supposed to vote on as an implied contract, it's not even the same legislation. You'd have to vote down the first legislation, I think, and then read, admit it with the signed contract or agreement, because there isn't a deal. So anything that he said, yeah, I'm watching time, anything that he said isn't binding, and that's the thing I wanted to be sure that people got. You know, my suggestion, last item, is that he redact the parts that are proprietary and make it public at least, so then they can be debated on the merits. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Stein, do you sign in?
I'm signed in. Thank you. Holly Stein. So four seconds, and I bring that up, four seconds. On May 7th, this is how long it took between when the lawyer for the developer stopped talking to when a council member here on the dais started the process to introduce a motion to reconsider. Four seconds. You have to ask yourself, why? Why, on such an important issue, did it only take four seconds? Was this entire set of actions orchestrated by the developer's lawyer and multiple council members? Who here could have accessed your own city council rules of procedure? Well, the answer is, every one of you could have. All you had to do was find your phone, go to Google, type in, and you can do this, "Whitehall Reconsideration of Ordinance Process," and what appears is the Whitehall Rules of Procedure. Open it up, page 10, and you'll find what you're looking for. Under the Council Rules of Procedure, 2024-2025 Term, and we're going to come back to that word, because it's important, Revised 0903 of 24, and you find Article 12 under Motions. Now, the developer's lawyer was kind enough to tell you about Points 3 and Points 2, but what they failed to tell you was Point 1. And what Point 1 says is here, "A motion to reconsider a subject that may have been acted upon favorably by the council must be made," and that word "must," "must be made" before the adjournment of that session of council. Point 1 says it very clearly, and the word "session" does not mean the entirety of the 2024-2025 term. That would be like saying, you could come to day one of 2024, pass a legislative ordinance, and then have two years to come back to do a motion to reconsider? That doesn't make sense at all. That's not the logic that applies. Now, what it says is that once the ordinances were acted upon favorably, which it was, and you guys know that, the next part kicks in, and it says, "The motion to reconsider must be made before the adjournment of that session of council." It means that date. It means the date of April 15, not May 7, 2025. There are no do-overs, there are no redos, there are no mulligans, there are no whatever word you want to say. It's, there is no time for the developer to come back to make these ordinances more palatable. It is per your own rules of procedure. There are no mulligans given, and I respectfully ask this council to rescind the approval of the motion to reconsider that was requested at a poll public by a Whitehall elector, just like myself, and give me the same consideration and respect that was given to that party.
Ms. Stein.
Where do I sign in at?
Right over here.
Thank you. Joy Bibbins, and I am definitely a full 20-year resident of Whitehall. I stand here before you today as a resident to discuss something that's very important to this community. Thank you. Not just this community, but around the county and the nation, which is youth homelessness. We all know that when summer hits, unfortunate things happen to a lot of young people, and I believe there was a data point that was given, about 73% of your school district, unfortunately, is at the poverty level. I am asking if members of this council will partner with me personally, as a resident, to collect things that our youth homeless shelters need, things like toiletries, toilet paper, toothbrushes, those types of things, because this, on May 30th, I will be participating in what they are calling the Sleep Out, to raise money for youth homelessness. And so, so that you will know, there are a lot of young men that are homeless, but there are a lot of young women that are homeless. And what we want to make sure that we do is, we try to mitigate that as residents in the county and raising private dollars, you know, resourcing our shelters so that they have the resources that young people will not be turned away. And unfortunately, what you will find is, a lot more young women are trafficked, unfortunately, due to not having a place to stay. So I'm asking this council, as a resident, I have to make sure I reinforce that as a resident, to partner with me to do a drive so that we can collect things that our homeless shelters, our youth homeless shelters need. If you would like to visit these shelters with me, you are more than welcome. Thank you.
Just one question, and we don't have a conversation, but you can, as far as the list of things needed, such as toilet paper...
I will send them to you.
Yes, if you have to send that list, that'd be terrific.
Thank you so much.
Anybody else wish to come forward? Okay. Ms. Ong, would you please call roll as to whether each member of council was given a copy of each item of legislation listed on the agenda prior to the meeting, including any add-on legislation?
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harkar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Okay. First, we have got reconsidered ordinances, which we have got three, which will be read by Title Only. Ordinance 9, 2025, Organizing the Fairway Cliffs Community Authority, Establishing the Boundaries of the Authority, Establishing the Method for the Selection of Board of Trustees of the Authority, Appointed Members of the Board of Trustees of the Authority, and Fixing a Surety Bond in Amount for the Members of the Board of Trustees. And this is tabled until June 17.
President Potter?
Yes.
I'd like to say something, please. Based on information that we had from poll public, I would like to untable this and make a motion to withdraw the reconsideration.
Is there a second?
Untable?
You can't withdraw the motion to reconsider unless it's, until it's untabled. So I would like to make a motion to untable...
It's actually going to be two, two motions, one will be to untable, then...
So given that, then, given the information that we heard at poll public, I would like to make a motion to untable Ordinance 9, 2025.
We need advice from our city attorney on, I don't, under Roberts' rules, once a, the only person that can withdraw the motion is the, once it's been seconded, and since it's been tabled, it has, the only person that can withdraw it is the person who made the motion.
So that's a definite?
Yes.
Or is that a belief?
So, yeah, for Roberts' rules, only the person that can, because you can't withdraw someone else's motion. You can, as we've talked about on Friday, you can untable it and call for a vote, but you can't withdraw someone else's motion. Only they can withdraw it. And so if the person that made the motion wants to withdraw it, if there's no objection, it's withdrawn. If there's objection, it goes to a vote to see whether it gets withdrawn or not, but only the person that made the motion can withdraw the motion.
Well, given that, then, would Councilor Elmore be willing to withdraw her motion?
No, thank you.
Okay. That's fine. I will just say this, that when there was a question to make a motion two weeks ago without your presence here, it was all good and fine, and we didn't have you to ask questions of, and now here we are, ready to make a motion, and now we're curious what your opinion is, but we didn't have the ability at that time to get your opinion. And so it just seems like two standards. Okay? Thank you.
Okay. Next, Ordinance 10, 2025, also tabled until June 17, 2025, Approving Community Reinvestment Area, Real Property Tax Exemption Application for Fairway Cliffs LLC, Whereas Designees Authorizing the Mayor to Execute an Infrastructure Agreement and Related Documents for the Projects. And lastly, by Title Only, is Ordinance 11, 2025, also Title Only and tabled until June 17, Creating the Fairway Boulevard Tax Income Financing Incentive District, Declaring Improvements to the Parcels Within the Incentive District to Be Public Purpose, Exempt from Real Property Taxation, Requiring the Owners of Those Parcels to Make Service Payments and Move Taxes, Establish Municipal Public Improvement Tax Income Equivalent Fund for the Deposits of those Service Payments, and Specifying for the Public Infrastructure Improvements that Benefit or Serve Parcels in the Incentive District. Under Third Reading, we have got no legislation. Under Second Reading, we have got Ordinance 37, 2025, which is being read by Title Only and is being referred to Planning Commission for their June 16, 2025 meeting, which is amending Section 11.03 of Planning and Zoning Code of the City of Whitehall, Ohio. Under First Reading, we have got Ordinance 39, 2025, Authorizing Exemptions of 161.09A, Vacations and Sick Leave Credit Carryover, 161.098, for the Purpose of Retaining a Highly Qualified Employee to the City of Whitehall and Declaring an Emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance 39, 2025, and move for the Suspension of Rules.
Second.
There's been a motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Harkar, to introduce Ordinance 39, 2025, and for the suspension of all rules. Is there any discussion? Ms. Ong, please call roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harkar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Move to adopt?
Second.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Harkar. Any discussion? Ms. Ong, please call roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harkar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Ordinance 39, 2025 has been adopted. This brings us to Ordinance 40, 2025, which will be by Title Only, Authorizing Adoption of the... of the May 2025 replacement pages to the codified ordinance of the City of Whitehall, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. We now have ordinance 41, 2025, authorizing improving a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $49,000 from unappropriated monies in the law enforcement trust account 241 to the law enforcement trust fund expense account 241-000-50,000.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 41, 2025, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second. There's been a motion by Ms. Elmore, second by Mr. Morrison, for the introduction of ordinance 41, 2025, and for the suspension of all rules. Is there any discussion? Ms. Auden, please call Rolle.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Ordinance 41, 2025 has been adopted. Oh, I'm sorry, the rules have been suspended. Got ahead of myself.
Mr. President, move for adoption.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. A motion to adopt for the passage by Ms. Elmore, second by Mr. Morrison. Is there any discussion? Ms. Auden, please call Rolle.
Morrison.
Abstain.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Abstain.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Ordinance 41, 2025 has been adopted. Now, ordinance 42, 2025, which is title only and referred to Planning Commission for their June 16, 2025 meeting, an ordinance enacted by the electors of the City of Whitehall pursuant to an initiative petition to amend zoning code, establishing Fairway Boulevard overlay district to limit future uses, subdivision, and infrastructure within said district, to amend the zoning map to protect large trees, to impose a moratorium on development pending the outcome of initiative petition, and provide for a private right of action. Brings us now to ordinance 43, 2025, which is making an appropriation, approving of supplemental appropriation of $12,000 from unappropriated monies in the general fund 101 to the tuition reimbursement expense account 101.900.51,710.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 43, 2025, and move for the suspension of all rules.
I'll second.
There's been a motion by Ms. Elmore, second by Mr. Brown, to introduce ordinance 43, 2025, and for the suspension of all rules. Is there any discussion? Ms. Auden, please call Rolle.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
I'll second.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Elmore, second by Mr. Brown. Any discussion? Ms. Auden, please call Rolle.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Ordinance 43, 2025 has been adopted. Ordinance 44, 2025, making and approving a supplemental appropriation of $18,000 from unappropriated monies in the police salaries account 101.960.51,200, the police community liaison account 101.960.51,420.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 44, 2025, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Elmore, second by Mr. Morrison, for the introduction of ordinance 44, 2025, and for the suspension of all rules. Is there any discussion? Ms. Auden, please call Rolle.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Elmore, second by Mr. Morrison, to introduce ordinance 45, 2025, and for the suspension of all rules. Is there any discussion? Ms. Auden, please call Rolle.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Dixon, second by Mr. Morrison, for the introduction of ordinance 45, 2025, and for the suspension of all rules. Is there any discussion? Ms. Auden, please call Rolle.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Dixon, second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? Ms. Auden, please call Rolle.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Ordinance 45, 2025 has been adopted. Ordinance 46, 2025, approving and making a fund transfer in the amount of $434,443.75 from unappropriated monies in the general fund 101, the debt service fund 401.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 46, 2025, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
There's been a motion by Ms. Elmore, second by Ms. Smith, to introduce ordinance 46, 2025, and for the suspension of all rules. Any discussion? Ms. Auden, please call Rolle.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Ordinance 46, 2025 has been adopted. That brings us to ordinance 47, 2025, approving and making a fund transfer in the amount of $309,700 for various accounts in the Wim Petty Fund 279, the debt service fund 401.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce 47, 2025, ordinance 47, 2025, and move for the suspension of all rules.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Elmore, second by Ms. Harcar, to introduce ordinance 47, 2025, and for the suspension of all rules. Is there any discussion? Ms. Auden, please call Rolle.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Elmore, second by Ms. Harcar. Any discussion? Ms. Auden, please call Rolle.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Elmore, second by Mr. Morrison, to adopt. Is there any discussion? Ms. Auden, please call Rolle.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Ordinance 47, 2025 has been adopted. Ordinance 48, 2025, approving a fund transfer in the amount of $232,212.50 for the Police Department Tax Levy Fund 280, the debt service fund 401.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 48, 2025, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
There's been a motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Heck, to introduce resolution 16, 2025, and for the suspension of all rules. Is there any discussion? Ms. Auden, please call Rolle.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Heck, any discussion? Ms. Auden, please call Rolle.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Move to adopt. Second.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Heck, any discussion? Ms. Auden, please call Rolle.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Resolution 16, 2025 has been adopted. Resolution 17, 2025, as listed as title only, directing submission of the question of approving ordinance 9, 2025, to electors at the November 4, 2025, general election.
Mr. President, I wish to introduce resolution 17, 2025, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
There's been a motion by Mr. Dixon, second by Ms. Smith, to introduce, or, resolution 17, 2025, and suspend all rules. Is there any discussion?
Is there anything else that we should know before we vote on this, as far as getting this on the ballot? Anything else that we need? It's just so different than what we typically vote on. Is there anything else we should be considering?
I mean, no, it's, it's a ministerial administrative act that you have to do to put it on the ballot. The Board of Elections won't put it on without action from council to put it on there. The charter outlines what goes on there in Board of Elections, so it's not, not a, if you have a specific question, but no, there's not much left on it.
I don't, I don't have like the, all the information, I mean, other than just, you know, voting on it to get it on there, but I don't have like the specific language or anything.
That would have went last week with the drafts, but it, basically, the wherethes is the, the history of it, and then the section of it actually defines the language that goes on the ballot. And, and that's what was sent to the Board of Elections previously to, to review, because they have their Secretary of State handbook about what, how language is formatted and stuff, so.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Return, question. So, in any, at any point, can something change within these resolutions, but it's already gone to, already been voted to move to ballot?
What do you mean, can it be changed?
Can anything change with the wording in the resolution? Because three, one reading or three, it still ha, it's a process and a procedure. So, if anything in between intervening in those times changes, we basically give up our conversation of having if we've already moved this to the ballot. Is that correct?
Right. The, the only thing that could really change on there, because the, it has specific language that instructs the clerk to send it to them by a certain date, and them to place it on the ballot. The only thing that could change, and it would be a small change, might be how the question is posed on the ballot, but that also, while the charter says, the city attorney drafts that, that also has to conform with the Secretary of State election handbook for how questions are asked.
So, something can change, and we give up our, we give up our time, our, our right to say anything about it, then?
Something could change. I don't know that I would advise changing much in it because of that, because it, it does have to follow a pretty strict form. I just want for clarification, are you talking the question on the ballot? Did I hear? I'm not sure. Are you asking about the way the question would go to the ballot?
Yes. The wording, anything changing?
So, what, what could change would be the short statement about what the ordinance is.
Can we just repeat? Okay.
So, if, if we, do you have a copy?
Me?
So, within the resolution, there is a box. And at the top, it, it's how it will appear on the ballot. And it says, "An ordinance," you know, and then there, there's a brief description of the ordinance. Yeah. That brief description of the ordinance is what can change. The, the polling locations will have, to have a copy of the actual ordinance on site. But that description is what can change. And then the question is, "Shall ordinance 009-2025," and then the title of the ordinance be adopted? That can't really change. So, so really, what you're looking at is just that top brief description of what the ordinance is meant to do can change.
My apprehension is that it, it could change. And if it does change, then it's already moved forward. That's my apprehension. But that, from what you just stated, that could potentially happen.
I guess I'm having a hard time imagining the description of the ordinance changing. Because the ordinance is what it is.
Well, my question would be, I guess, whether it goes on first or third reading. Could it change either way?
Could what change?
The description of the ordinance.
No, once it goes to the Board of Elections, what is in there is what they will put on the ballot. But again, the description of the ordinance is kind of what it is. And it's kind of in the heading of the ordinance.
I don't know if your concern is, theoretically, could that be, like, you know, if the description is changed to this resolution is gonna give everybody in Whitehall a million dollars, that's obviously an over exacture, that would never happen. But if it changes to something that sounds fantastic to, you know, people who may not have read the entire resolution or whatever, is that what you're concerned about?
I would prefer to see whatever has a potential to change within the readings that we have and any conversation we can have within that time period to allow it to have, to allow it to toll. That's why we have three readings. To try and push this through, okay, it's going to the ballot, that's a given. But what's it gonna look like when it gets to the ballot? That's the concern for me. And I want to make sure that I utilize my times, my readings in order to address whatever issues that that might be.
I would like to once again explain, I explained during the agenda meeting, but some of the folks here in the council chambers weren't here. We had discussed this last week. This is from the referendum petition that was put together in lieu of ordinances nine, ten, and eleven. And it's been put to three readings, but the point is here is that we have a duty, shall put this to the ballot. Now, the question last week was whether or not we should have a special election or send it to the November, I think, fourth ballot. And Council President Potter alluded to a hefty sum for a special election. I felt that the sort of tone was that none of us have a stomach to do that, spend that money and so forth. So therefore, we're left with having to send it to the November fourth ballot, unless someone wants to correct me on that day. So as a result then, in my mind, I think, well, let's go ahead and send it along. Let's move it along. It is what it is. Here it is. It's ready. Let's go. And so therefore, that's why I am, instead of letting it move through three readings where I don't see the point of it, let's go ahead and just pass it and get it on its merry way. So that's why this was being done.
And the questions that I had are on the referendums themselves because I didn't know that we were voting on this tonight. We weren't going to do that initially. I just didn't know if there needed to be any discussion on what went on the ballot. Does it stay like this? I haven't done this before, so I want to make sure I'm 100% certain on what we're voting on.
So, the charter says the city attorney, when putting it on there, will construct the concise description of what the ordinance is, and so that's what's in there. I quite frankly used the precedent of the maywo wood language along with that to stay consistent. That said, that portion is part of something before council, so council can always go to amend it. But the charter says, city attorney drafts that statement, and so that's what it is.
You don't foresee these changing? I just want to make sure you don't foresee these changing at all?
The Board of Elections will not change. They cannot by law change our language. With some small scrivener's exceptions, like if there's a typo or if I hadn't pre-approved the question and said, shall the ordinance be, you know, defeated? That's not the form they ask the questions in, so they could change that to approved. But they cannot make substantive changes without sending it back to us, which is why when I do referendums and recalls and initiative petitions that go to the Boards of Elections, I send them a copy ahead of time to make sure they're good with the question that is asked because they have a specific format they have to follow in that.
To be clear, so who would have the ability to change the description of the ordinance?
So, I guess that gets into the question of division of powers. The charter says the city attorney drafts that statement. That said, it's part of a resolution, which council is responsible for passing and can always amend. So it gets into a little charter disagreement right there.
The only reason I'm asking is normally we'd have a little more discussion and time to discuss this, so I didn't know what impacts, any questions that we might have about the way that it's written would impact how it, I'm not trying to keep it in any way from getting on the ballot. I just want to make sure that we fully understand what we're voting on.
Well, we're voting on the referendum.
Yeah, you're voting, so if I may see your copy right there. So, when you have your copy, this is what will be on the ballot. And so this, you know, in ordinance oh nine, where I, you know, would create fairway plus community authority, establish authorities' boundaries and method for selecting trustees of authority, appoint initial trustees, and fix the surety bond amounts of the trustees. That is right out of the title. And then the Whitehall City Council approved this ordinance at the request of the applicant seeking to redevelop this parcel to provide for additional housing units within the city consistent within the adopted citywide development master plan. That is the description of the ordinance. Again, they'll have the actual ordinance there. And then you get the question of, shall that ordinance? And then it has the exact title of the ordinance be approved. So if you send it to the ballot, that is exactly how it will appear.
So, if there is doubt, we have three readings to rectify whatever issues there are. And I'm saying, what is the point of pushing something through when we're not even sure or some of us, the understanding is not clear?
Well, it seems like that in general, the understanding is that this is gone. So far, it's been approved. It's been, well, it's been understood that it adheres to whatever boxes it needs to adhere to. And so at this point, we would just be checking a box, basically, and saying, okay, yep, it's cool for us and we're good to move it forward in the process.
That's one way to look at it, yeah.
What's the other way to look at it?
I guess there isn't another way. Yeah, it's an administrative action. You have to send it to the Board of Elections. The charter says city attorney writes a concise statement. Board of Elections has the format of their question, and so that's where we're at. All the other stuff in the ordinance, I mean, you can always change the whereas's, but that's the history of it. But the sections that require, you know, the clerk to send it there and stuff, none of that can really be changed.
So, if we vote on, sorry, I'm not trying to interrupt you. So if we vote on today or it goes to three readings, essentially, it really doesn't make a difference because this is how it's getting there. There's nothing that would change, so it really doesn't.
Well, again, that goes to Councilwoman Elmore's question. It creates the potential issue of charter says, city attorney writes the concise statement that goes on there, which is what you have, but it's also part of a resolution that council has the ability to amend. So, you know, what is the amendment? And I get, it gets into that conflict. And I don't know off the top of my head. It's entirely possible that council wants to amend it. And I don't know if I have the authority then to say, no, you can't do that because it says I have to write that, it goes on the ballot language.
So if there's changes within here and we want to amend it, again, pushing it forward, it's already done. It's already done. We don't have three readings now. It goes exactly the way it's written. And I'm not going to give up my right or the say to have, if anybody on this day says, oh, I was rereading this and why are these parcels in here and they don't agree? Or why is this in here and that's different than what's been some discussion? Well, it's gone.
May I say, please, that it wasn't really hardy discussion when there was a motion to reconsider nine, ten, and eleven. But now that we're trying, making an opportunity to perhaps get this moving along as opposed to three readings, now there needs to be hardy discussion.
This is very different, though. We're voting, we're saying vote on this tonight. The reconsideration, we were not voting on. We were saying we're open to it. There was no, I mean, we weren't actually going to put something through. To me, I look at it very differently. This would be final. That was not finalized. That was an opportunity. This would be final. To me, that seems very different.
So, a question here then. So, you have done your due diligence. You have done what you're supposed to do in as far as crafting the language to do this. You, City Attorney Brad Nicodemas. Now, is it anyone's obligation to share that with the people that put together the referendum? And do you know if they have indeed received copies of the language that you've crafted?
Well, it's in the resolutions that have been provided at committees and...
No, no, I'm talking about the ballot language, the two we're just talking about.
Yeah, that's part of the resolution today. The draft resolutions that were sent out last night for committee, or last week for committee.
Well, that's on.
So, I mean, it's been out there.
Okay. So in other words, those that have crafted the referendum and have seen it, have you heard of any objections to your language?
Are you asking if I sent it to the people that filed the referendum?
I'm not sending it. If you're saying that everyone has now seen it, then clearly, the people that, the ones that could object, the ones that set the referendum over, has there been any objection that you've heard from anyone to your language?
I can't say as to who and who has not seen it. It has been out there. It's been produced. And tonight is the first time I have heard any concern about the ballot language.
Okay. Well, again, you know, I feel that, I mean, I have not heard anyone speak up about concerns that this is not as they would like it to be. And I just feel it's a little bit of wanting to put, albeit if they indeed have that ability, their two cents in to something that's ministerial and that we have to put on to the ballot. That which you have crafted the language for with your due diligence. I don't understand what the problem is. And certainly, if we've not heard from anyone else saying, how dare he word it like that or anything else, I don't understand what the problem is.
Can I ask a question then and follow up to that? If this were any other resolution, anything else, and we said, let's vote on it tonight. It was supposed to go to three readings, but we're not gonna do that. Then I feel like that's also kind of setting a precedent that we can, well, if the city attorney said it's good, then we can go ahead and move it up. Like, wouldn't that be the same thing? And no, maybe, I don't know who's contacted the city attorney. I don't, maybe everybody loves this language and they're perfectly happy with it. I don't know. But if they were planning on hearing council tonight, coming back with a concern on it, then they wouldn't have the opportunity to do that if we voted on it tonight. If it goes to three readings and it doesn't change, they still have plenty of time. Again, we're not trying to keep this from getting on the ballot. That wouldn't in any way hinder them if it goes to the full three readings, correct?
Correct. August sixth is the deadline. And so there's plenty of time between now and then for it to go to the three readings.
So if anybody that worked on the referendum, I don't know if everyone's read this or not. If they look at it, they take it home tonight, they have questions about it, and they want to contact the city attorney, and we voted on it, they also then wouldn't be able to say, this is confusing to me.
You still have to vote on it.
We just have to vote on it, of course. Every intention of doing that.
Folks, I, there's really no, I think we've kind of talked this round pretty well. I think we need to move for the vote on this. The first vote is for the suspension of the rules. Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Elmore?
No.
Rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, I'd like to move to adopt, please.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Dixon, second by Ms. Smith for the adoption. Any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Do we, do we move to adopt this? Do we move to table? I'm still a little confused, I'm sorry.
No, we're moving to, we have, the rules are suspended for the vote.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
Yeah, so now the call's been made for the actual vote on the legislation. Ms. Aug?
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Elmore?
No.
Resolution seventeen twenty twenty five has been adopted. Resolution eighteen twenty twenty five, which was titled only, directing the submission of the question of approving ordinance ten twenty twenty five to the electors at the November fourth twenty twenty five general election.
Mr. President, I wish to introduce ordinance, I'm sorry, resolution eighteen twenty twenty five and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
There's been a motion by Mr. Dixon, second by Ms. Heck for the introduction of resolution eighteen twenty twenty five and for suspension of all rules. Is there any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Elmore?
No.
Rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, I would like to move to adopt, please.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Dixon, second by Ms. Heck. Any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Elmore?
No.
Resolution eighteen twenty twenty five has been adopted. Now we have resolution nineteen twenty twenty five, which is listed as title only, directing the submission of the question of approving the ordinance number eleven twenty twenty five to the electors at the November fourth twenty twenty five general election.
Mr. President, I wish to introduce resolution nineteen twenty twenty five and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
There's been a motion by Mr. Dixon, second by Mr. Morrison for the introduction of resolution nineteen twenty twenty five with suspension of all rules. Is there any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Elmore?
No.
Resolution nineteen twenty twenty five has had the rules suspended.
And, Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Dixon, second by Mr. Morrison for the adoption of resolution nineteen twenty twenty five. Any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Elmore?
No.
Resolution nineteen twenty twenty five has been adopted. This brings us to our final piece of resolution, or ordinance, legislation this evening, resolution twenty twenty five, resolving to approve then announce certificates.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce resolution twenty 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 five and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
There's been a motion by Ms. Elmore, second by Ms. Heck to introduce ordinance twenty twenty five and for the suspension of all rules. Any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Elmore, second by Ms. Heck. Any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty five has been adopted. This brings us to our second poll public this evening. Same rules apply. If you need to sign in, you'll have three minutes and you may not speak. You've already spoken on the same subject.
I've spoken to you guys before, my name is Al Johnson. And I'm a twenty year resident of Whitehall. And I'm just gonna recap many things I think you've already heard, which is, we live on one of the properties that's two houses down from the whole, I think, one house down from the proposed development, so we're on about seven acres.
Mr. Johnson, could you speak in a microphone?
We're on about seven acres. And I remain very concerned about how the accountability in the process for the developer is gonna hold up. And I haven't heard too much, at least in the meetings that I've been in, regarding the process, if he doesn't do certain things or if he flips it to Ryan Holmes or another sub-developer, how is he and/or Ryan gonna be held accountable? I know you're all capable people and I appreciate your efforts, but I'm very concerned about that. I also find it interesting that tonight, one of our speakers, who I don't think is here anymore, spoke about help homelessness. And it's an interesting dichotomy that, you know, we're talking about this in the light of people who live in some of these homes, residents survive over a million dollars. It's really not about money or how long people have had these properties. It's wanting to take care of their community. And that includes those who are deemed homeless. And it leaves me in somewhat of a quandary because I don't want to see people homeless, but yet I also don't want to see high density properties without any accountability, high density new properties without accountability for the developer. I shared with you in the past how much that developer's gonna walk away with based on the fact that, you know, I was a real estate expert for many years, was a bank examiner and traveled the country. I think I shared that he's making a minimum of one and a quarter to one and a half, possibly three million just using the back of the envelope. Even if he flips it to Ryan, I shared with you what the homes are that he is proposing, at least in the Ryan Development, priced at four and a quarter. And that's really, in some ways, it's market, market level. In other ways, obviously, it doesn't meet the needs of the homeless. But with all that, I appreciate what you guys do. It's gonna be what it's gonna be. Again, just keep in mind the community overall, which I'm gonna accomplish. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come forward? Moving on?
Mr. President, may I, just for one moment, I apologize. I know this is out of order, but I do have to make a public announcement. I did step away from council for one moment. There is a glycol tank spill near the airport. I would advise residents that live near or on Mason Run or Turkey Run to avoid that area. I have spoken to Chief Preston Moore, who is currently monitoring the situation. Hazmat is out there cleaning, I believe Homeland Security is also a part of it. But the point, and the reason why I wanted to make this point publicly, there is a smell that is associated with this spill. We are determining whether, what type of glycol it is, whether or not it is toxic or non-toxic. And so that is just, you're getting really breaking information right now. As you've heard, the fire engines passing by. But I did want you members of council, as well as you members of the public, because I see there are more people here, and I don't know if you live near that area. But I would just express concern and express just being alert as you go into that area. But I will get more information and I will share that, have that shared with the public as I get more information.
Mayor, thank you. Very much appreciate that. And for everybody watching at home, that's good information to have.
May I ask a question real quick? I don't know what glycol is. We know...
It's a coolant, like in your car. That's how you put your radiator.
Because I live right next to Turkey Run.
Yeah, it is like a coolant.
And it freezes.
And there are two types of it, and that's what we're trying to determine, the type. So I just want, and I'm glad I said something so that you are aware, but that is happening right now. Okay, thank you.
Community date board.
Okay. The big summer kickoff, city kickball tournament is happening May thirtieth from six to eight. You can sign up on the city's website. Parks and Rec is holding summer camps. They're still registering for them for the month of June. The last day of school for Whitehall City students is this Thursday, so you'll see more kids out and about. Walk with the Doc, which is the third Saturday at 10:00 a.m., has moved to the senior center. And then there is youth football camp from Whitehall. Yearling High School is running a youth football camp, grades K through six, for $25 per athlete. I think that's all I have. That's it. Anybody else?
Amy's my second go-to on that, so, okay. Thank you. Poll council, Mr. Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to thank everyone who showed up and for their participation, everyone watching. Like to thank Mr. Nicodemas for all his patience and his explanations and hopefully has gave some peace of mind to people and processes and how it works. This has been a long process going through this and hopefully we get through it without much more turmoil. Everyone have a good week. Thank you for watching.
Thank you. Ms. Heck?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, everybody that's watching from home and everybody that's here tonight. I appreciate all of the conversation, everybody that came up for poll public. I look forward to getting that list. I would love to support and do a drive to collect for youth experiencing homelessness. That's all. for youth experiencing homelessness. That's where we all are.
Very good. Ms. Smith?
Thank you, President Potter. Thank you to those here this evening and those watching from home this evening or at a later date. Congrats to the seniors. It's a very exciting time. I know, I feel like you spend your whole life waiting for that, so that's really exciting. I did want to touch base on a question from Poll Public, from Mr. Robinson. Also, someone, please fact-check me if I get this wrong. So, yes, the development agreement, that is something, at this point, I was hoping we would have seen, but the process has changed a little bit. So, it sounds like what was communicated is what was communicated to us. Typically, a developer will come for incentives. We say, "We're inclined to agree." They then construct and craft the development agreement, which then comes back to council's legislation for the mayor to sign the development agreement. At that time, if we have concerns or things we'd like to see changed, that would be through that process, and then we would vote to the development agreement. At that point, that document would be public. What we received and what was out of order, per se, was that draft agreement. Ideally, that comes back around, and that is public record for comment and consideration. With the referendum and this reconsideration and the other, and the citizens' initiative, I'm not sure where that comes into play right now. But it is my understanding, this is where somebody needs to fact-check me if I'm wrong, is there is no incentives without the development agreement. So, the way it was explained to me is that is another check and balance to the process. We're inclined to give you incentives. We see the agreement, it's all written out for everybody to understand what are the, as Mr. Johnson said, the developer accountability, transfers, all of that is within that language. That has not come back around at this time. When it will, I'm not sure. But I did want to address that, because I know that has been thrown around for quite a while. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Harkar?
Oh, oh, sorry, got to be quicker than I expected. Yeah, I just want to thank everybody for being here tonight. Thank you. I know we've gotten a handful of emails, and I appreciate everybody that's come in and spoke. That's really all I have for this evening. Thank you all. Have a good night.
Mr. Dixon?
Thank you, President Potter. I'd like to thank everyone in the chambers and out there who are watching from home. I want to, I want to acknowledge the presence of those that took time out of their daily lives to come in protest out in front of City Hall this evening. You know, I think protest is one of the benchmarks, the hallmarks of this country. Very American, First Amendment to protest. So, I want to thank them for coming out and doing so. I applaud them. I would like to say thank you to Mr. Robinson, Ms. Stein, Ms. Bivens, and Mr. Johnson for their words tonight. And by the way, Mr. Robinson, very well said. That was my little note with an exclamation point. Well said. And here's the thing, I had written something out tonight, and I've just simply decided to not read it. But, because there's a lot of things going on right now, and a lot of thoughts and emotions swirling about, and I just don't know quite where to land on all of that. So, for now, I'm just kind of letting things go along and see where they head. But I will say this, and certainly based on information we got tonight from Mr. Johnson, Mr. Robinson, and Ms. Stein. It is my personal belief that the emotion to reconsider never should have been given credence. For a number of reasons, we've heard some. The fact is, is over a year and a half's time, they've had all the time in the world to present everything and anything, and they have. As well, the citizens of the city have expressed themselves. And they brought plans, which was very thoughtful of them, to draw plans to make a less dense situation, and that was never acted upon. So, everything moved down the line in the fashion that it did. It was passed without the emergency measure on the ordinance. The people then had a right to put together a referendum for the charter, and they did that, et cetera, et cetera. I just, at this point, everything has been fairly brought through the emotions that it has, and I don't see the point of it, particularly when there are so many concerns and questions otherwise. So, I don't agree with it, but of course, I wasn't here. My apologies on that. And otherwise, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, President Potter. I would like to start by thanking everybody who took the time to come out this evening. Thank you to everyone who is watching online. Thank you to everyone who shared at Poll Public. I would also like to, you know, just encourage folks to show up to the conversation with Commissioner Crowley. It sounds like an incredible opportunity to be able to sit down and speak with someone who makes decisions at a very high level for our county. So, you know, that's always great to have, you know, people who are in those seats of leadership, be able to interact with them and ask them questions. So, I also want to thank the, or, I want to congratulate the Whitehall seniors on graduating. It's a big accomplishment, and hopefully, the first of many as they continue on their journeys. I also want to thank Ms. Bivens for sharing, you know, her movement for a drive that helps support youth homelessness. I know that that is a big issue, and it's been growing over the years, not only in our city, but all over our region. And so, any opportunity that we have as a community, as individuals, to be able to help support those folks, I would encourage people to act on. I also just want to, I guess, just address some of the comments that were brought up tonight. Well, first of all, I just want to thank everyone who continues to be a part of these conversations. You know, Whitehall as a city is going to continue to face issues. And the more people that we can continue to have show up and have conversations, the better we'll be able to flush out ideas and conversations. So, I do appreciate it. I know that, you know, it's been a little clunky over the past year or so, but, you know, my hope is that as we continue, it will get better, more smooth. And ultimately, we'll get, you know, everybody in Whitehall involved. That would be great. But, you know, just one of the things that got brought up in regards to the development agreement in general, it's my understanding as well that, you know, whatever gets signed off on would be transferred to whoever ends up owning the land. So, if they were to, just to answer a question for you and for everyone else who's wondering, it's my understanding that, you know, if they, if the developer was to sell to Ryan Holmes specifically, everything that has been agreed upon between the developer and the city, then they would have to adhere to that, is my understanding. But I just recently came from a national conference, and it was interesting. One of the things that, you know, is apparent all over our country is that affordable housing is an issue. And I know that it's common for people to focus on, hey, if we're going to, you know, fix the affordable housing issue, we need to put up more affordable housing. And I do think that that is one part of it. But what I've now understand and, you know, continue to learn more about is what a middle-tier housing can do to help with the affordability issue. And one thing that it does is it helps open up starter homes for people who would be moving up into that middle housing. It opens up their starter home to, you know, a more affordable option for folks. So, I'm not saying that this project or that type of housing is going to solve all of our issues. They won't. But, you know, again, as we talk about these things, it is important to, I think, address some of those nuances. But ultimately, we're going to continue to agree and disagree about all the, about many of the things that come before us as a community. And my hope is that as we continue to have these conversations, that we will be going into these with open minds, open hearts. We're looking to hear what other people are saying. And again, ultimately, be able to come to resolutions that, you know, move the city forward in a way that's best for as many people as possible. So, I look forward to continuing to work with people. I appreciate everyone who's reached out directly, and I hope everyone has a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Ms. Elmore?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank everybody that has attended, those that have come before during Poll Public. Also, I want to thank the city attorney for the timelines, because the timelines are really important. So, I appreciate the timelines you've given us. I want to say congratulations to all of the two thousand and twenty-five graduates of Westerville, I mean, Westerville, Whitehall Yearling High School.
Westerville, too.
It's a W, okay? Whitehall Yearling High School. And I know that they're going to do great things. They already started trying to solve the issue of busing. So, they are very gifted, in my opinion, and I know they'll excel and do great things. Want to thank, I don't have everybody's name, but Merrill. And always given really good data and facts and information, and I appreciate your information. Ms. Stein, Joy Bivens, there is definitely a homelessness issue here in the country, not just the state of Ohio. So, addressing the homelessness issue is paramount. And we should do everything within our power to address that, even with regards to affordable housing and market-value housing, for-sale housing here in Whitehall. I want to thank also the Poll Public of Mr. Johnson. I always am, I don't want to say captivated, but I really am by your passion and how you speak regarding the issues because of the emotion behind it. So, I really appreciate how you deliver your information. I do believe that during public partner, public-private partnerships, there should be accountability, and that the accountability should be checked. So, I appreciate that, what you said, as far as that goes also. I do want to address some of the resolutions with regards to moving forward and not giving it an opportunity to have a reading. And everybody gets an opportunity to say how they want to vote, and that's on them. But when there is any areas of legislation that we are unsure of, that's why we have three readings, to address whatever issues that may arise, whatever additions, subtractions, whatever it is. That's the opportunity to address those issues. And just to move forward, not knowing, I'm not sure about operating with the not knowing. And so, that's my issue with moving forward without knowing and having the information if it changes, and if it doesn't, it still goes through the process. It doesn't change. So, just, that was one of my issues. But I will say this. The position that we all sit in is, is one that is elected. It is a difficult at times, when things are easy and nobody shows up, and it's always easy to move things. However, when there are issues that are near and dear to people, there's always going to be people that stand up and speak. And that's what Poll Public is for. That's what it's all about. Information gathering, data gathering, and all those things to pull your information together so that we all understand concretely what that means. And so, I am, I am not one of those people that bend under pressure. Because when I took oath of office, I knew pressure came with it. Working in legislation and politics for over thirty-five years, I know what that is. And when I look at the state of our country today, I really understand what that is. There are a lot of people being pressured to do different things. And, and, and to me, pressure makes diamonds. And all I'll say to that is I'm going to continue to shine. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I think everything's been pretty well covered. I would also like to thank Ms. Bivens for coming in. I think that's very good information she passed along. And then, Ms. Aug, once she provides that information to us, I'd like the items needed, please have posted on our council website, and if you could also maybe get with the city and have it on the city website as well, so the public can certainly take advantage of participating in that. And then, also, I'd like to congratulate the graduates from Whitehall Yearling High. I know it's just, we've all been through it. It's a big exhilarating moment, hitting that threshold, and then going on to the next step and getting some additional thresholds. But it's a huge weight off your shoulder, and a new weight just got put on there, whatever your next step in life is going to be. But with that said, I've got no additional business for this council, so I will adjourn us at eight twenty-five.